So we'll start the meeting with the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we'll start the meeting with Mr. Bobo with the RFPs. Doug?
We have three RFPs that came in, one for each of the services that we had put out for bid. So we had one for medical, one for pre-trial services, and one for our mental health. I don't know which one you want to start with. But I've looked at them page by page, the sheriff has looked at them page by page. Everything as far as we can see meets the standards for the main department of corrections. So we are, we're going to, I guess. Okay. The first one, I guess, is our medical. And the bid was put in by MedPro associates. And Terry Thurlow is present here. He's the administrator for the thing. The one year would be $199,465.32. And there is an option to extend at a 3% increase each year. I don't know if you want those amounts.
No, we'll just do it one year.
Is this a one year at a time and then with the option? Okay. So that's what we have for our medical. They've been our provider period of time.
Just a quick question, do you have any idea how much that is more than last year? Do you know roughly what it is, sir? There you go. Do you know what the difference is between last year and?
I don't. As a matter of fact, I don't think we went up just 3% this year.
So 3% less.
3% more.
Yeah, this year, 3% less than last year. You asked that question.
Yeah. Last year, 3% less, okay. All right. I move we accept the quote from the, from MedPro, having been reviewed by the sheriff and Mr. Bobo. The amount of $199,465.32.
You're just going to accept it? You're accepting the bid, right?
Accept the bid. I move we accept the bid.
Not for the jail. I'm a little confused though.
This is for MedPro.
This is for the jail. That is correct.
Is that?
For medical services.
That's the one you recommend?
Yes, that's, this is the bid that we have. This is our current provider. We had no other bids come in.
Oh, oh. I thought this was. Okay. Okay. Our second motion.
Okay, you need discussion? Do the discussion on that motion. Sign that, all in favor of that motion. Three to zero.
Just like that. Can I get you guys to sign this, bring your name, please? We want three copies, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
One for me, too. You have to have one.
And one for Scott. Those are guys, you guys haven't remembered my only face. I've been here since, what, 2014 or something? As long as you make Mr. Bobo happy, I'm okay.
Yeah.
We try. And we'll give that to Vicki and she will get us copies.
Okay.
Do you need the original now before you leave?
I'd like to have it, but it, it doesn't matter. He can fax it over to you.
Doug, when you're finished here, can you run downstairs and there with the copies?
Sure, sure.
I'll leave it right here, Vicki.
I just brought the.
No, he wants it. Doug's going to take it downstairs.
Oh, he wants it back?
Yeah. He wants Vicki down. Doug wants to make copies.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay.
We have our mental health bid here. We only had one provider put in for that. Bailey is here right now. She's been our current provider as it is right now. The one-year bid with a two-year option is for $51,000. That's for a 12-month.
Okay. That's the only bid we got, Doug?
That's the only bid we got for mental health services.
I make a move, we accept that bid for $51,000.
Let me ask a question first. Can I ask?
You can second it.
Yeah, okay, I'll second it for the purpose of discussion. Thank you. Last year, we had, you were contracting out with passion part of this bid, right? Is this a different bid or same, same subject matter, right? You will?
Same.
So you would still continue to do that, right?
Yep. Yep, and I provided a one-year option for 51 and a two-year option for 102. My math is correct.
Well, it's just the same price. Any further discussion, questions?
Well, while we're discussing, do we want to go with the two-year option instead?
Lock it in for the two years?
Want to lock it in for two years and save us?
Yeah, you said that she agreed with that.
Yeah, she.
Yep.
Locked in at two years, so make that motion, we lock her in for two years.
That'll be your motion, okay. I'll second that. Yep.
Any further discussion? Sign that, all in favor of that motion. Signify, three to zero. Good? Congratulations.
Thank you. We're pretty happy about that.
Okay.
I'll hang up while you guys.
Okay. This is pretty exciting stuff to watch.
Yeah.
And our third RFP that went out went for, for pre-trial services. And again, we got this one bid on the pre-trial services. This is our current provider for that and its main pre-trial services. And Elizabeth is here, she's right there. If anybody had any questions for her. So the contract proposal for the total expenses is $73,560, which is a 0% increase over the current.
Say that number again, Doug, please.
Seventy-three thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars.
So I move that amount, seventy-three thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars for the main pre-trial bid?
Second motion?
There is an option for continuation for up to two years if approved.
Would that be for the same amount?
Would that be for the same amount? That is the question. So it would be a 3%?
And the other one, you?
Yes. Or the next one you bid.
And the others are right in the whole document.
Oh, that's right on this. We did, I don't know this. So there is a three-year thing here. The first for this one coming up, there is a 0%. And then 22, there's a 3%. And 23, there'd be a 3%. What your wishes are for that.
Clyde, what you want to do? You want to do it for one year or you want to?
How much are you thinking?
This year is a 0% increase over last year. For the following year, each following year would be a 3% increase.
Cool as long as the rest of them too. Go ahead, make the.
So our motion is what? Except for one year?
Excepted for one year, yeah.
Okay, we'll do that.
All right. All right. Any further discussion on that?
So you're doing it for one year?
One year.
One year.
One year. All for the motion? Three to zero.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Doug, I wanted to know, we did receive another RFP. It doesn't stick on the outside, which it was for, but it was after, it was after we actually agreed on the RFPs.
Okay.
So I did not look at it.
Yep, okay. I have the option.
Yeah, I don't.
Is this different?
This is for the pre-trials.
Oh, pre-trials.
And there are, how many copies there? Did you say there were three copies there?
I mean, four.
Four copies there?
You want four, you want to sign it four times? Oh, no, it's, oh, it's only for the chairman himself.
Really?
Take my e-
Okay, so I see you.
Would Jerry be coming in today or calling in?
I don't know that far. We need to run that by him. Doug? Yes? All right.
I think that's the whole story. So go down and see his merit and how he's set.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Julie? Julie?
Yeah.
I have an issue on the Freeman Road. I had.
Yeah, I, yeah, I was continuing here as well.
I, I think our road agent should get in contact with the gentleman that did the work and ask why it's so rough and hasn't been graded and, and rock rated.
And the culvert, you mean?
And a culvert, the, the two culverts are, they're speed bumps. And he said he took care of the culverts and there's a chunk of the culvert still left. And there's actually a huge truck spring set in there. Somebody hits those, they're not going to be happy. And he just dumped the load of gravel at the top of the hill and ran with his truck, so it hasn't been graded out. So I don't think we should pay the bill until Jerry Haynes has looked at it. Did you hear that, Julie?
I did, yeah.
Okay.
So you want, you want us to have Jerry go over and take a look at the road and tell him we don't feel it was done satisfactorily?
That's correct.
Didn't Jerry go with you?
Okay.
And you went over?
No. No, I went alone. Okay. So we'll move to. Okay. Do you have anything else? All I have here is the clerk's report. But Mens, Bruce Mens is here. I'm not sure why he's here.
More avoidant maniacism.
What's that?
More avoidant maniacism. As far as the UT road grading.
Yes.
So the bid was pretty vague in that it just kind of said, you know, Jerry Haynes as far as the bid goes.
Yes.
For information on it. And I went and met with Jerry and I rode all the roads, measured all the roads for the county.
Yep.
And in that, he made it very apparent that it was supposed to be a lump sum bid. And then, I don't know if anything's gotten awarded or if it has or hasn't, but the other bid, they put in a per mile bid because they didn't take the time to go look at any of the roads, nor did they know what they were or where they were. They just threw a number at it because that's, that was the only way they committed because they didn't know.
Yeah.
And the way I see it, I mean, if we're going to ask for it to be put out by bid as a lump sum bid and then that's out of the way, it ought to be called. I know the prices are very different.
Yeah, they are.
And that other price honestly, I give a little bit. At $300 a mile is very, 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 very cheap to be grading and operating. And if that's what they want to do, they want to go pay themselves on that price, I don't mean to overlook it. But I think the process in which you asked it to be bid was meant by yourself and it wasn't by the other person.
Are you, are you listening to this, Julie?
I am. And that was, you know, that, that's what Jerry was supposed to do, was draw up the stats. And evidently, I guess it did not happen appropriately.
I, Clyde, back here, committee commissioner. I don't think that bid was appropriate. I don't think it was put out properly. It was misinformed by both bidders. And I don't see how he could do it for $3 a mile.
300.
That's 300 a mile, I'm sorry. 300 a mile. It comes to $6,900. At one time, the roads have to be graded at least two or three times. It's caused by the weather. Now, my, my question is, every time he grades it, is he going to charge $69,000? $69,000? $6,900 for every time he goes up in grades? I mean, it's, these people, Mazzah, knew that they're going to have to do it more than once.
Well, actually Jerry had explained that he thought that it was only going to be, from what he heard, that it was usually, it was twice a year. But where it was so late in the year, that it's going to probably only be once. But he didn't know that for sure.
But when you bid on that, you didn't know how many times you was going to have to do that a year, right?
He made it pretty clear that he thought it was once.
And that, okay.
So I think part of the problem is Jerry's not communicating well with the commissioners. I mean, I thought we made it clear to him that he was supposed to get the specs together for all the projects and communicate with all the contractors. And apparently that didn't happen in this go around with the grading because Vicki took a call from the, was it GCA?
Okay.
Who awarded the bid.
Yes.
Yeah, they made multiple attempts to get hold of Jerry to have a discussion with him exactly what roads were going to be graded in the mileage. And according to them, after numerous phone calls, he never returned the call. And that's why I submitted the bid just the way they did. So I think both people that have bid on it are not happy with the process. Let's just put it that way.
I, it's obvious, I think.
I agree. I agree with that, Julie. It's not, it won't put out properly.
It wasn't, it wasn't, it was very vague. I mean, it was basically just a, just a paragraph of what, you know, what they were looking for. And then to talk to Jerry as far as specifics on the job was all it was. And when I called them, they didn't, they didn't really know the lengths of the roads. And so I spent a full day, six hours of my time driving around. I measured all the roads with my truck and the DMI. I put the time into it, the way I looked at it, which I didn't, I don't know if that's true, that they did call and didn't get a call back. So maybe that has something to do with it. But the way I look at it is I put my time in to make sure I understood what I was bidding. And when I heard it come in as a $300 a mile bid, it's, to me, it's quite clear you didn't go with the timing to find out what you were grading. So you just threw a number at it.
What? I was going to ask you, I was going to ask you something. I can't. Maybe I'll come to it.
So Julie, should we get in touch with the road agent? Have him put the specs out again to these two companies?
Well, have, have you, I guess we, I didn't know where we were with the bid process. Did we award the bid to GCA? I mean, I.
Yes.
Not aware of how we moved that.
Yes, we did.
Jerry called.
Had they started the project? Does anybody know?
Well, they did Freeman Ridge section, so I don't know if they've done any other grading or not.
I don't know. I didn't see, so I.
Last time in, we were looking for a grader operator.
That, that should tell you all.
Yeah, I, I. I think the problem is, we, Jerry just took over this whole process. I'm not making any excuses at all. But obviously, he's not, he's not fulfilling what we expected him to do. It's that simple. And it's too bad that.
I just want to make sure.
Too bad for this. Well, and I don't, I don't, I ran the business for 30 years, 35 years, and I don't, I never liked it when I would bid 5,000 and somebody come in with much less quality operation and product and give it, you know, it makes me look bad in the press.
Exactly, that's what I.
And I think that's probably. I'm sure you're not going to make a lot of money, much money in a multimillion dollar job for you. The idea is you don't want, it look like you were trying to charge too much. We've got to make sure, obviously, we don't, this doesn't happen again. And we got to have a system where Jerry, I'm not picking on Jerry, but we got to have a system where we, when we ask him to do this, he's got to do it. So everybody is playing with the same, you know, we're all using.
Right, right.
See, brood me. So I.
Go ahead, Julie.
I think you ought to have Jerry come in to the next meeting.
Yeah, we'll do that.
I, you know, we, I thought we explained to him what the expectations were of him acting as the road agent going forward this spring. And apparently, I don't think he understands what you want him to do.
Okay.
So I do want to add one thing.
Go ahead.
Mazzah has done a lot for this county over the 10 and a half years I've been here. They have saved us money on jobs that they have done. They're a good company to work with. They've worked with us. And in my district, I have most of the unannized territories. And they have done a good job on, when it comes to hot topic, they've saved us money. And I do want to thank you for the work you have done in the past for this county.
As you know, I retired to sell the business.
I know you have.
I've got no dog in this fight. My, my take on this is that probably this is a moot point at this point in time. But if you're going to use the bid process, you got to use the process correctly.
Right.
And you can check with the POT, you can check that at the time. But if you put something out to bid and you would ask for three oranges and you get prices for two apples, that bid is invalid. And it shouldn't even be read. It should be discarded at the point in time that it's open. So I guess you guys, you've got it on your shoulders as to what we do if this guy doesn't perform.
Yeah. Absolutely.
It's our responsibility, so.
I mean, that's, that's saying, if you graded every one of those roads and it took a day to do it, you're working for $3 a day with fuel or grader or manage property or truck. You just don't even make sure.
And you get to haul your equipment from where you're from.
Find your locations, you need a mobilization.
Yeah.
Granted, they have their own trucks, sure, but it still costs you money. Whether it's your truck or not, it costs you money to move stuff.
The intent wasn't to communicate distinctly.
No.
The intent was to.
Not at all.
To purify the process.
We were just misinformed, I'm sorry about that.
And I can make, and finish to Jerry Haynes. Jerry did his job. His settlement and specification is not written. Get in touch with the road agent for specification. They didn't do that.
Yeah.
So they didn't even, they didn't even find the requirements of the.
The beginning.
The RFP.
That's right. And we didn't know that to listen to you.
Yeah.
I think, I think some of them have given off.
Well, I'm hopeful that you guys will keep, you know, try again, please.
Hit, hit, hit that.
You, you. It's unfortunate that, I, I, because it.
Well, I didn't, it's, the price difference too makes me look bad. But I think they severely underbid it. And that's, that's on them to now go do it for that price, which has nothing to do with me nor do I mind. But when I come in at a price that's a lot higher than that, because that's closer to where it needs to be, then that makes me, makes me look bad.
Yeah, understandable. Thank you.
Take the time and effort to do what you're.
Right.
Yeah, correct. I saw your numbers.
Question, Bruce. How's your father?
My father's doing fine. He lost a lot of time in his slips, but.
Very good.
He's 86 years old and he deserves that.
Yeah?
Yeah.
He's still, he's still carrying his husband goes every day, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so next meeting, we're going to have Jerry Haynes, the road agents, here. So if you'd like to come back.
When would that be?
14th of July.
July 14th, so let's meet.
July 14th.
Same time.
Take time, 10 o'clock.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I don't.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. How are you?
You too. Yeah. Okay, we'll move to the clerk's report.
You have to do approval of these June 25th meeting minutes.
Make that motion and accept the June 25th meeting minutes.
Oh, yeah, I'll second that, I guess.
Any?
I'll second it.
Any discussion on that motion? Sign that, all those in favor of that motion. Three to zero. Thank you.
Clyde, it seems like we agree more than we disagree. That's good.
Item, next item, treasures report and the carry forward request.
We have three warrants, two category warrants and one more team warrant approval. We have three requests for carry orders. The first one is from Joyce Walton from Register appropriate to want to carry over $2,000 from line item 4020. And she explains in her letter.
I got 2,400.
She wants.
Unextended.
She wants to carry 2,000 or 2,400 on.
Yeah, it's in the last, last sentence. They have the amount.
Rashparagon.
Six.
Here's Julie's radio.
Come on.
Do you have a question? So I requested that in my 2021 budget, I had reduced my court services line because Mr. Webster had asked if, if any of the departments could cut back a little bit. And of course, this, that line, excuse me, I'm out of breath, I ran up the stairs. That line is something I never can determine what we might need for expenses. So yesterday, as I explained, I have two pending matters that I need interpreters for. And then I have this ongoing termination of criminal rights. Yesterday, I received a $1,400 bill for one of the attorneys on this termination case. So I certainly am going to need these funds because I did reduce that line down by 6,000 this year anyway, so.
Well, I move we accept this request to move forward, request $2,000 to be carried over into the next budget.
And I do believe, I think my balance this year was like 2,400. That I have left in that account. So I have pretty much used up what I had requested last year. So that would help me because I have no idea what might come in.
Move that amount and we thank you for being prudent with our.
Well.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions? Sign that, all in favor of that motion. Three to zero.
Thank you. I shouldn't run up the stairs.
The next request is from Scott Nichols, the sheriff's department. He's requesting to have $21,000 from line item 3036 to be carried forward to a line item for control buyout for the next budget.
What is 3036, Vicki?
It actually is the deputy's payroll.
Oh, okay.
He has extra funds locked in there because of the.
They asked that question last night, Bob.
Remember, he explained that to us, yeah, about that line item.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
Because the buyouts has gone up.
Yeah.
So much that he's afraid that if he didn't have that in that, he would be in trouble. And I make a motion that we request his 3036 be carried buyout to $21,000.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further questions or answers or discussion? Wow, it's huge audience here. Jim, do you have any questions?
Not much at all.
Everybody's still on.
Yeah. So all in favor of that motion? So signify, three to zero. And last, we have one from, from Vicki Grayly.
I had, I was discussing with Julie yesterday. She'd like to carry over $5,200 to be taken from the IT department, line item 4076, which is contractual, to carry forward for the next fiscal year to cover the cost of the mountain TV for future commissioner and budget community meetings.
So, so Jim, are you in favor of that?
I guess so.
Okay.
He does have the funds.
Okay, I would, I would move that and then we discuss. And we, we make this transfer of $5,200.
Okay?
Yeah, second the motion. We've got to do it because on the count of 88.
Is it in the, did we already budget something in, in next year's budget?
No, we did not.
Okay. So that's why we're doing it now, so we.
Yeah, and save that cost.
Okay?
I, I did request the budget committee to put that back in. I did send an email to them, but they have not brought that up at any of their meetings. So if they're not going to put it back in, we're going to have to carry something forward to cover the cost for it.
So in the event that they do put it in, then we, well, we can notify them, we don't need it now, right? We can do that. Okay.
Yeah, we can send them an email. Yep.
Thank you.
And if they opt to put it back in, then we simply don't have to carry it forward.
All right.
We can let it go undesignated.
Thank you.
Save another $5,200. Okay, any further discussion on that motion? All in favor, so signify, three to zero. Okay, thank you.
We all agree on today.
Yeah.
Amazing, huh?
Amazing. Speaking of emails, are we going to do anything, Julie, about the emails that were handled by the budget committee? are we going to do anything, Julie, about the emails that were handled by the Budget Committee? That were not shared with the public? You hear?
I'm here. I guess I don't understand the question.
Well, I, I, I thought that was going to be turned over to the Ethics Committee, but I don't think they're in charge of that. I think the Commissioners are in charge of that.
So, yeah, I didn't take any action. I mean, I didn't know if you wanted to have, are you talking having the A G's office look into it?
Well, personally, I feel that, that we have, uh, the fake news, that they never print anything about what happens here at the Commissioner's Office. And they only select items that they want to talk about or print. So people keep asking me, what's this all about? And, uh, the only way we're going to get it out there is to talk about it in a Commissioners' meeting, apparently. Because the newspapers don't print anything about it.
Julie, this is Charlie. How would the process work? Could we contact the Red LED Attorney Jones' office? Uh, what will be the, do we talk to our lawyer? What do we do?
Yeah, if you wanted to get an opinion, we could actually write a letter. Uh, I think it's Brenda Kilty. Uh, she's in charge of the Freedom of Access Act, making sure that it's complied with. So we could simply, uh, have a discussion with her, send her an email letter, and let her know that you were, you have the concern, um, of what happened with the Budget Committee and would she be willing to look into it?
Then I would make a motion that we, I'd make a motion, we do that, we request the clerk to, our staff to contact, um, them and you can write the letter and move it to Chairman to prove it, or one of us, we'll be in catch, one of us can prove it, if that's all right with you guys.
Second that motion and on discussion. Yeah, go ahead. It makes you feel like a nobody where this Budget Committee is working this year.
Well.
I, I, last night, the meeting, I went home and slept an hour all night long just thinking about how we were used.
Right, right.
And we work hard to keep our budget down. We work hard to satisfy people. And you're not going to satisfy three hundred thousand people. I mean, you can't do it. So I, I feel it, it's wrong for what they've done. And I think it ought to be carried on and, and see how it comes out.
Well, that's good. Thank you, Clyde.
Yeah, thank you.
So we'll, we'll, we'll leave.
Okay, all, uh, if that's the end of the discussion on this, uh, all in favor of that motion, so signify. Uh, I'll abstain from that motion, so the vote is two to the one abstention. And it's for political reasons. I understand that. Okay, all right, um, I guess that's it.
No, I'm missing these. All guys, all business, I want to get a question, when you give any other question, I'm missing these.
Okay, all business, it's, uh, Commissioners' meeting dates. Julie? The next meeting is the fourteenth. From there, what do you want?
I wanted to double check on that. Yep. And, and there's another discussion I'd like to have regarding Commissioners' meeting dates as well. Um, as you know, and I don't know if Joyce is, is there in the audience or not, but.
No.
Uh, we had originally planned on, or had requested the state to use the courtroom that you're in there today on Mondays going forward. And I believe Margot, since then, may have changed her mind about meeting on Mondays. So I guess my question to you is, uh, Lori Pratt from, from the state reached out to me last week and wanted me to put that request in writing. Um, if probate is not interested in using the court on a weekday, uh, do you want to move to Mondays or do you want to see if we can use the courtroom on Tuesdays as regularly scheduled? Do you have a preference?
Yeah, I hear you. So the fourteenth is okay or no?
Yeah, we're okay with the fourteenth, but I mean, going forward, they just want to know what our plan is. And so do you want to, do we want to move to Mondays or do you want to just stay with your regular Tuesday meetings? Right now, I'm thinking you stay with Tuesdays because, uh, from what I'm hearing from the state, there is, they probably will not be utilizing the courtroom at all until early November at the very earliest.
Okay. We're upset. I, I think we ought to leave it at Tuesdays at ten o'clock, Julie, because on accounting, uh, the payroll week, you have to get ready for the Commissioners. And it's hat, you've got a lot to do that week, and that's every other week. And, and so I, I think if we meet on Monday, it doesn't give you much of a chance to get the Commissioners' stuff ready, as far as I'm concerned. And I thi- I think we ought to leave it to the ten o'clock. Because when we move to ten o'clock, the reason why was, well, I wanted it at ten o'clock too. But I want the only one, Julie, you spoke up and said, gives you guys a chance to get ready for the Commissioners. And I appreciated that because the weight was on me and I.
Yeah, no, ten o'clock is missed because it gives us time to get in, get organized, get everything set up, especially where we're meeting upstairs now. We, it takes a little more effort to get ready for the meetings and getting stuff up there that we need, so. No, I think, I think we, we stay with Tuesdays. I think, I think we'll be accommodated at least through November and we'll see what happens with the court after that.
Yeah, good, okay. Charlie?
So the question, Julie, is, um, are we going to go to once a month or a couple of months for all the summer? Do you want to, we're going to go to fourteenth? Tell us what you're thinking. Uh, do, I mean, obviously, we're pretty flexible. You want to go back to the first and third Tuesday after that?
Yeah, I, I, I think so. Yep, back to first and third after we get past the fourteenth.
So the July fourteenth and then August, uh, fourth?
August fourth, and eighteen.
And August eighteenth, okay, that's fine. All right, that's on my calendar.
Yeah, I've got to put it down here.
Something changes, we'll, we can always meet, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, does that cover that, Julie?
Yep, that sounds good.
Okay.
I, I do want to update anyone on where we are with the discussion with the treasurer.
Oh, certainly, go ahead.
That was my question.
Yep, I, I, I spoke with Pam today and, um, things are pretty much as we had discussed a week and a half ago. She is planning on slowly returning back to work in, in the office. Uh, at first on a reduced schedule, and I don't know what that's going to look like. Um, she did request me to go ahead and move her desk into the Commissioners' meeting room next week, which we will do. Um, and then at some point, more than likely after Vicki returns from vacation, she said she would come in and, you know, try to work a day and see how it goes. So that's where we are. Um, she also, yeah, there's Pam, good. Pam might explain this.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yep, so that's where we are. So the implication is, uh, and what I have budgeted for the Commissioners, line items in the budget for part-time help, I feel strongly that those numbers need to stay there. I know the Budget Committee has been looking at those hard for reducing those. I've talked with Vicki this morning. I've talked with Pam. I don't see any way forward that we can make any reduction in those line items to get, get done what we need to accomplish in the Treasury, in the Treasurer's and Commissioner's Office. I think if, if you reduce that, um, you're going to be causing a problem for sure.
Okay. Pam, did you want to say something?
Yeah, thank you. Um, that, that was a good presentation. I'm really looking forward to coming back into the office, but it's going to have to be a little gradual. And I'm sure you're, you'll be understanding. And once Vicki gets back from her vacation, um, we'll all be on the same page about how things will best operate in the office. But I share Julie's concern about, you know, having adequate part-time to do a lot of the clerical tasks. I mean, really, um, the Treasurer's job is kind of more of an oversight job, and I'm happy to do tasks if I have time. But for example, we're going to be managing our cash more closely this year. We don't really have investments. But, um, we're going to have to keep on top, on top of that to try to make sure that we're not sinking into a hole with our, with our cash balances in the bank. And Vicki and I are both, we're both trying to stay on top of that, but we need time to think about things and talk to bankers and so forth. Um, and that kind of relates to the question, I think, that came up last night at the public hearing, that I didn't want to really take up time at the public hearing about this. But just to mention that, um, I know you have to think about how much of the assigned fund balance is going to be sufficient to sustain, sustain operations for a period of months. And then the time period was mentioned as three months. But in the most previous, um, audit, Terry, you might have picked up this too if you read the audit notes, that the auditor is now saying that a sufficient unassigned fund balance is approximately four months. And they're not, I mean, it's not really an official recommendation by the auditor because they can't give us financial advice. And I don't think the auditor would be happy if you said the auditor recommends this. But they thought that, that the four months that we are now keeping, because we're in good condition as a, as a county, our finances are in good shape, four months is, is sufficient. And this was, um, put in the audit after the, the coronavirus concerns were starting to be felt as an economic factor. So I would view that as kind of approval of having four months in there. And my, my feeling is that you might not want to empty out your wallet in the middle of pandemic. And that's probably what the auditor was thinking too when he used the word sufficient unassigned fund balance being four months approximately. So I just wanted to clarify that. I didn't want to take up the time at the public hearing last night to delve into that, but, um, there you have it.
Thank you.
And also, um, Mr. Chairman, I don't think you voted, you all voted to, um, approve the Treasurer's report, which Vicki gave.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want to ask Julie a question, but first I'll move that we accept the Treasurer's report. Thank you, Pam.
Uh, second the motion, the Treasurer's report from Pam. Okay, any further questions, comments?
Thank you.
And Vicki, I'm sorry. Yeah, um, in favor of that, three to zero. Thank you, Pam.
Okay, I have a question for Julie. Julie?
Yep.
So what I, my concern is the additional ten thousand dollars. Mike, I guess my question would be if Pam, uh, if things were different like they were last year and Pam was still coming in on a regular basis, would the ten thousand dollars be required? Would we need to put an additional ten thousand dollars in the budget if Pam was in here two days a week like she's always been? Simple question.
No, we, but, no, because we, we're having Mary cover for two days because Pam and I had the discussion this morning. If, if Vicki, if Vicki's not available to answer the phones or not in the office, Pam would like to have Mary there those days that she's in there. So if Pam gets back to a regular schedule, whether or not, I mean, two days a week, if you want the Commissioners' office open with somebody in there, we're going to need Mary two days a week, and she's still going to have to cover vacations. So that, that, that's the number you see in the budget.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm not understanding the answer. Uh, in other words, if Pam was coming in like she was before, spending two days a week here.
Yes.
I can answer it.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Pam.
Yes, um, as Julie and I discussed it a little bit this morning, and I think she's aware of this too. Um, in the past, when Julie wasn't available to be there, Vicki was not available to be there, I had experiences being the only one in the office. For example, there was once when there was actually a medical emergency in the building. And I was not equipped to properly handle that, um, write down the information needed for insurance company and so forth and so on. And in order to actually handle people who are coming in, since then, I had been asking if nobody else was going to be in the office, would I was going to be in there alone, could Mary please come in? And usually, either I or Vicki or Julie have tasks that Mary can do. And we count on her to do, actually, and those are a good time for her to do them. So it's not something new that Mary would be in there when I'm in there because I've been requesting that in the past anyway. And it's been working out well.
So our current budget already has money in there for Mary. Am I right, Julie? So this is the additional ten thousand dollars. That's what I'm confused by. We already have money in our budget. Mary's working for us or someone part-time that's already in our budget, in the current budget. Am I right?
That is correct.
So that's all.
There's going to be an increase, there's an increase in this line item for the, for the upcoming year because Mary before was mostly coming in mostly on Commissioners' Meetings Day or only when we had a specific project for her to do, like, uh, copying the budget, putting the budget together physically. I mean, those were the things, you know, it was not a set schedule for Mary other than the Commissioners' meetings, meeting days unless she was needed. But going forward, with Pam indicating that she is, you know, she's not going to be answering the phones, prefers not to, she does not prefer to deal with people that may be walking in or up to the, to the doorway for service, then we need to have somebody available. If you want the Commissioners' off, office open and able to function, then we're going to have to schedule Mary for two days a week. And what Vicki and I had discussed is, uh, Vicki would probably be in on Mondays and Tuesdays, and Mary would be in Wednesdays and Thursdays. And that's why we opted to close on Fridays to the general public.
Clyde, good question.
We, Clyde? We kind of got to have Mary on Wednesday and Thursday because the Treasurer, when she's here, she's going to be in the back office and she won't be answering the phone or answering the door. So we've got to have somebody to cover that office. I hear you. That's the way I look at it. But that's an extra.
Charlie's.
I agree.
Charlie's.
We, we need to, we need to have somebody in there that, you know, can wait on the public. I mean, we don't have a lot of foot traffic per se from the public, but, you know, last week was an example. Somebody stopped by to pay a civil process fee and thank goodness Amanda was upstairs in my office. And between the two of us, we were able to, uh, take the money in and give it to the gentleman a receipt. So those are the things that you never know what, you know, you're going to, you're going to have to wait on people. That's, it happens.
But Charlie's question, I don't think has been answered yet. He asked if he needed an extra ten thousand dollars. Uh, and, and I, I believe that's so we can have Mary in the office for two, two days, right?
That is correct.
Okay, that answers Charlie's question.
Okay. Well, I, I guess I'm, I'm, my position is that if we're going to put ten thousand dollars extra in the budget, it's coming out of some ways. If Pam's not going to come in and do what she was about to do, then I'm not going to give her the money. That's my position.
One thing, another thing I actually did want to, uh, report on today because it, it just doesn't seem to be a lot of understanding about the county's, um, our bank accounts and the balances and the interest we get. I mean, you're welcome to look every month at the bank statement, like I do. But here's an example of how Vicki and I's management of our bank balances and our relationship with our bankers has paid off. In the calendar year two thousand nineteen, which is how the bank reports it to us, not by our fiscal year, but by the calendar year, it, just in the county's account, we have a repurchase agreement that covers the, uh, checking account. In interest, in that account, we made twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars. And then in this separate account, which I call an investment account, but it's not. It's just a cash management account where we put money that we feel we're not going to need in the checking account in the near future. That one earned us in two thousand nineteen, eight thou- eighteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars approximately. So together, just for the county budget, this doesn't include the TIF for the U T, our, our interest was forty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. So our ability to spend the time to develop relationships with our bankers and talk to them about what would be beneficial to us and them in terms of how we manage our money, I feel it really has paid off. And I don't think that you should discount that as a function. I mean, it is a function of the Treasurer's Department to do that. That's the best thing that we could be doing to improve our financial position. So anyway, I, because I don't really get into those details of what the Treasurer and the Treasurer's Office does, you know, you may not be aware of that. But I just wanted to let you know that that is one of the important things that Vicki and I work on when we have time, if we have time. And I think it's important for you to respect that, that function of our office. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you. Any further discussion on this?
Well, I think we have to take action sometime, if I'm concerned. Uh, if Pam's not coming in and we get to spend ten thousand dollars extra, the money's going to come from someplace, and I'm not taking it from the tax. from someplace and I'm not taking it from the taxpayer. I'm not going to vote for it. We should notify, I suggest we notify the budget committee that we're, we're going to, we're taking that out of the budget and we, we set the salary for the treasurer and the same as the commissioners, $12,000 a year. That's my motion.
What choice is that?
I make a motion that we set the salaries for the commissioner, for the treasurer at $12,000, the same as the commissioners. If she starts coming in on a regular basis, we don't have to use, don't have to use the part-time people, then at that point, we would, we would, we can readjust it, but at that point, we should look at it. At this point, I just can't, I don't understand why we should pay $10,000 more because for whatever reason, the treasurer decides she doesn't want to show up and won't answer the phone. So that's my motion. I move we set the salary for the treasurer at $12,000 a year without benefits and notified the budget committee that we are not, we want to take that $10,000 off the line.
Second motion.
Could I weigh in on that?
Yeah, of course. Absolutely. Go ahead, Pam.
Okay, miss, well, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to appeal to you because as you know, last night during the public meeting, I did point out that it is in the discretion of the commissioners to set the salaries and the pay because you do. I mean, once you make a decision as to what bills you're going to pay, what obligations you're going to pay, that is what, that is your decision. Now, in the case of the treasurer, there will be repercussions. Last night, there was a couple of comments made by budget committee members as to what potential checks and balances there are on what the commissioners do in this regard. However, a couple of things that as the treasurer I can mention is that this is the type of action that sometimes is construed as obstructing the treasurer. And that's something that I don't think you want to be involved in. Cutting the pay and benefits of a treasurer that is sitting in office, that is in office, can be construed as obstructing the carrying out of the duties of the treasurer, which are set by statute. In other words, you would basically be cutting back my hours by doing that. So you are the ones who would be cutting back my hours. I have told you multiple times that I am doing the same number of hours of work that I have been doing in the past. I've been working partly from home. I have also been carrying out my duties in the office, but I've been doing it on a staggered shift to protect my staff because of the lack of social distancing. I've also told you both, as all three of you in fact, during the meeting, that I am open to re-entering the office. Julie has already recorded to you and I've confirmed it this morning that that is the plan. So I don't know why there seems to be some desire for, is it retaliation? Is it partisanship? I really don't know what's going on with you. I mean, unless you haven't been listening to what's been going on during this meeting, you act as if I am neglecting my duties. I am the treasurer. I was elected by everybody in Franklin County. I don't actually represent you. I represent the people of Franklin County and it is unnerving to think that for some reason, you don't want me performing the oversight functions and the treasurer's duties, so you're going to cut my salary and benefits? Another repercussion I want to mention, if you cut my retirement, it is not very much. It's only a fraction of what someone is entitled to who works full-time because I don't work full-time. However, if you cut that, I consider that pay cut because I will be actively seeking a part-time job if you do that. And again, I want to emphasize, I consider a cut in my pay and benefits and okay for me to work fewer hours because you'll be paying me less. And I want you to consider that when you make your decision. When you make your vote. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Pam. But you are working less hours. Do you have a computer at home?
Of course I do.
Okay.
I take home files, I do Excel spreadsheets, I do PDFs, I do all of the things that I can do on the computer at home except for the internet. Like you, I'm not on the internet, but I do come into the office and I perform those internet functions, email functions at a staggered shift so I am not jeopardizing my staff. And you may have a whole different feeling about the coronavirus than I do, but I am exercising every precaution I can at this time and it does not involve working fewer hours. In fact, one thing I'm actually able to do at home, which I haven't been able to do at the office because of interruptions, is go through some of the files that my predecessor actually left, which had never been sorted out because I never found the time to. So I brought some of her files home so that I can remove the things that aren't actually public records, things like just copies of budgets and things like that. So I'm actually able to be more productive in some ways by doing this type of part-work in the office and part-work out of the office. So I, you know, I really don't understand why is it that the treasurer's job, you feel the need to micromanage and tell me when I have to be in the office to answer public questions.
You've already stated the fact that the commissioners set the salaries for the county employees.
I have.
Okay.
And I said that it's your discretion, but you want, you need to know what the consequences are going to be. And I am just giving you a heads up because that is going to be on you.
Is that, is that a threat, Pam?
I'm telling you the fact. I'm just pointing out the fact.
It sounds like a threat. It sounds like a threat to me.
If you want to be obstructing the treasurer or having a red flag raised, that you will be, you will be scrutinized as to why, why would you want the treasurer to actually work less?
I don't think that.
You've got to think about it from that perspective.
Okay. Thank you. Charlie?
Pam, Pam, the problem is that the taxpayers look at this, they say, we're paying, we have to pay $10,000 more simply because the treasurer won't come in and do what she was doing before for whatever reason. My position is, you know what, if you start coming in again, we won't need to hire anybody part-time and the money's already there. But taxpayer is being forced to pay $10,000 because you choose not to come in for whatever reason and you choose not to answer the phone, choose not to greet people when they come in and whatever your reasoning are, that's fine, you have a right to do that. I think.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I'm waiting for Mr. Webster to finish.
Go ahead, Pam.
Okay. Go ahead, Pam.
You know, I don't even understand why you would say the taxpayers are saying that I don't answer the phone or that I refuse to answer the door. I mean, I guess what confuses me the most is that somehow you are portraying what the taxpayers are saying, but it's really you that is saying it. What Julie and I have been trying to explain to you is that there are a certain number of tasks that have to be done and one of them is keeping the commissioner's office open. And we have been using Mary to do that in the past, but now we need additional of that and we are in the middle of a pandemic and I just don't understand why you don't understand that the tasks are there to be done. And it's not my job to do the tasks that are in the commissioners' department. You really have to understand that the treasurer has their own role in, in making the administration of county government function. And our, our work has increased and fortunately we've had Mary to be able to help as our work has increased over the years. So I'm just, I'm just really baffled that you find it hard to understand that the work of both the commissioners' department and the treasurer's department hasn't increased, has not increased because it has. I mean, just think of how much more work Julie is having to do with the UT, with all of the problems. I mean, everything takes time. Once a problem comes up, somebody has to deal with it. I'm finding that the state of Maine is doing more audits. We just got a request in the mail, basically auditing an application for a field tax refund. I mean, these are not really little things. There's much more responsibility for dealing with the civil process billing 10 years ago when my predecessor started shortly after. I mean, I just came across some of these papers that I was sorting out for papers. Those were, those civil deputies were treated as independent contractors. We had nothing to do with cash receiving or billing. Now, we do the cash receiving for civil process. I mean, it's almost a daily thing. And then bill collecting, Mary's been very good helping with keeping track of overdue bills and sending out reminders. I mean, it's just an enormous amount of work and the payroll has become more complex. Things have basically changed. Things have grown and evolved and you don't see that because you're not there on a day-to-day basis to understand how either the commissioners' department works or how the treasurer's department works, you know, let alone the TIF. Look at, now we have a huge TIF and Julie and Vicki are dealing with that.
But we're going to.
There could be more work.
Pam, we're just, we're going to make your job easier because we're going to go with the automatic clock. We're putting money into that. So your job's going to get easier in the future. And let's face it, I think your salary including benefits is like $22,000.
No.
Sixteen thousand.
You added wrong.
That would be wrong.
No. That's too much.
Really? I got that information from your department.
Okay, well, I don't know how you broke out the benefits from Vicki and me because I think they're in there together.
Well, that's, that's what I got.
I mean, if you were to give me a raise, it would be 22, but I don't think it's fair yet because I, when I filed my taxes, that's, that's a little high.
That's tricky.
Whatever. I mean, it's, all right, it's within, you know, some amount, but I don't have access to it all because of the retire, it's in retirement and that's what I need. I need to be putting money away for retirement. You may be retired, I am not retired. I'm still putting money away for retirement. And why you would want to cut that from a professional worker who is trying to do as good a job with as profession as she can with working two days a week, I mean, I just think you need to have a reality check. Really.
I think everybody could use it. Charlie has a comment.
Just one final comment. Nobody wants to cut anybody's salary. We want the job done. It's been, been done for years since I've been here. It's been done by the staff with you included. Now we have to spend $10,000 more because you won't come in. It's that simple.
That's.
So either you come in and you do the job or we cut, or we cut, we're not going to raise $10,000 in tax money simply because you choose not to come in.
For me to work.
If you were, let me finish.
Pam, Pam, you're not letting me finish.
Let me finish. If, if you were coming in, we would still have a part-time person, but that's already in our budget. Am I right, Julie? The part-time personnel was already in the budget, but we have to add $10,000 more because job has not been done. There's nobody in the, Pam's not coming in the office. That's the answer. That's the bottom line, isn't it? Julie?
Yes, that's why I added the extra money is to cover.
So that's simple enough. I would just, let's just move on.
The chair is going to be there.
All right. Okay. So we're going to move on. So that's the end of the discussion. All in favor of the motion?
Can you read the motion back till we know?
Yeah, to set the treasurer's salary at $12,000.
And notify.
This year without benefits.
Okay. And notify the, and notify the budget committee that we're, that we made that change in the budget. Okay?
Okay.
It's already been motion and second.
Yep.
So all in favor of that motion, so signify. Three, zero. Thank you. Any other thing under, any other business under miscellaneous?
Yes, I have one thing. The county always puts out to the area the universal system for fuel, put them out of the offices and stuff. And we walked in at a rate. Sorry about that. I had it again. I can do it. But we walked in with a new rate of 1.629 per gallon and that's the number to be given. And currently, or as of the end of this fiscal year, we were actually paying 2.169. So it's quite a drop.
Quite, quite a huge drop.
So we walked in until June 30th of 2021.
So can I ask Julie a question? Julie? You there, Julie?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, no, that's okay. I'm sorry. Sorry to bother you, Julie. I had talked to Nick, he and I had had a discussion about the fuel tank and the fact that the oil company had filled the tank. And so I, we talked about, because this is my field as you know, we talked about, the tank is now full, so it doesn't make sense to try to pump it this year. We talked about pumping the tank. I think it's in the budget, right?
Me neither.
And I think that I had asked him to do a, to request, well, we should have a discussion about locking in a less gallonage, a little less gallonage so that, because now what happened is he had to fill it because we weren't using it. We are saving oil with the new heating system, significant amount of oil, I think, and we haven't adjusted the budget to do a card to that. So could you kind of look at that, Julie, and just figure out, you know, whether we could adjust? I don't want to, I don't want to be short on the oil, but I would like to adjust the budget a little bit if we could to save the taxpayers some money because what happened is the consumption's gone down. I think we had an overlap from one year to another, so that kind of messed up the totals. We don't really know where we're at and how much oil we actually need a budget each year. So if you guys could just look at that, I told you that what I recommend that we do is not pump the tank this year or get a price just to pump the bottom two inches. And then in the spring, we can let it run really low and then adjust, you know, then go in and physically go inside the tank and clean it out. But I think that there's, it seemed to me that we might have more money budgeted than needed and now with this price decrease, it may be a factor too. So could you look at that and just, if you make, whatever you guys come up with, I'm willing to agree to, but I think that we may be over budget in that area.
Sure, we can take a look at that. And Vicki, remind me, I believe we signed on, is it for 10,000 gallons at the courthouse? Is that correct? Was that total?
Yes, yeah, we have, we have a contract for a total of 18,000 gallons. It includes all the.
All of them.
Okay.
So that's why usually towards the end of the fiscal year, if we have a metaphor, they're going to.
Right.
So is this because we're using less fuel at the courthouse because of the new system?
Yeah, I think, I think.
Exactly.
When I talked to Nick about it, it appears that we're using, you know, significantly less and now we don't heat the subsection up here on the third floor anymore. So, you know, we don't have to do that because of the heat pumps. So I was just thinking that we, maybe we could.
Cut the budget.
Couple thousand gallons maybe. I mean, it wouldn't, it might not be a lot of money, but it might be three, four thousand dollars savings, which is a big deal to.
To me.
So.
But weren't, but let me, Vicki, weren't we over expended on that line item this year?
We are.
Yeah, but that's because, I understand, that's because we paid from last year.
One last.
There's an overlap in the budgets, so look at that. Just, just take a look at it, Julie. I'm not, don't spend a lot of time on it, but I.
Sure.
I think.
Vicki and I can do that. Take a look at it.
I asked Nick about it and he said that they filled it, there was something to do with the way the, the budget years overlapped, so we ended up buying four or five thousand gallons last year. I don't understand how that all works, but just take a look at it if you could, that's all. If we can, if we can drop that line, I'd like to, that's all. Thank you.
All right. Anything else under miscellaneous?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Real quick, just getting back to the, the discussion that we were having regarding, there was no article that came out regarding the budget committee and the email. And I received an email from Donna Perry that said she is in the process of writing an article and she will be publishing that shortly. Just so you know that it did get the attention of the press.
Well, she told Charlie and I as we left the meeting the other night that she wasn't going to write anything. So that's why I came up with that. But thank you. I hope they do like it.
And I know she said that immediately after the meeting, but I think shortly thereafter she did call me, I can't recall, but she did let me know that she had changed her mind that she was going to do an article on it. And again, she's confirmed that again today with, with an email to me that she is in the process of writing the article and had reached out to Tiffany for a. of writing the article and had reached out to Tiffany for a comment as well. So I guess that we'll be seeing that in the Sun Journal shortly.
Thank you. Good.
Do, does that change your position on notifying the AG's office, or do you still want to pursue that knowing that at least there's going to be an article written about it?
I want to know exactly who's in charge of who. So I'd like to have you proceed with that. Because I want to know.
Well, I don't know.
Go ahead.
You could ask.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. I guess who's in charge of who, I don't know if they're going to, all the AG's office will weigh in on is if they think, if they even agree to look into it, if it did constitute an illegal meeting. That will be the extent of what we get probably from the AG's office. That's going to be it.
Okay. All right. But the Ethics Committee, the Ethics Committee doesn't know who's responsible for the Budget Committee. They chatted with me yesterday about it.
Who's, okay, I guess, I don't know who you spoke with, Terry, I'm a little confused. The Ethics Committee?
Yes.
In Agastor.
In Agastor. It's for Franklin County, there's two different names, and it's the female that I talked to, and I can't remember her name. I could look it up at home, but I don't have that information with me. But she told me that the Ethics Committee is not in charge of the Budget Committee. So I want to know who is.
Oh, okay.
Julie, I would suggest, if you don't mind and the Commissioners don't disagree, let's just put it on the agenda for next meeting, we'll see what the report says, what the articles about the paper, and if we feel that we want to act after that, we could.
Okay, so I'll put that on hold for now. Okay, I can certainly do that.
We're all shaking our heads, yes, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for shaking your heads. I can see that.
You can't see that, though. Unless you're watching Channel 11.
But, but once again, Vicki, stay neutral. We're the only four of us in the room.
Okay, we've signed the warrants, if there's nothing more in miscellaneous?
I'm wondering.
I am, I am good.
Okay.
I am good.
All right.
Clyde has something. I'm wondering if we ought to go into executive session.
Should we have that next meeting, Clyde, with the Roads Commission?
Time is going by. We're going into 1st of July, and our roads are not being taken care of yet. And I'm getting four or five complaints a day with my office at home. I'm not complaining about that, but I hear complaints we aren't getting the work done yet. And I think, I think we ought maybe go into executive session over this.
He's talking about the roads, Julie, and the work that's been done, specifically on Freeman Ridge.
And I think Clyde has a very good point. I mean, I know Vicki's been fielding a lot of phone calls from the citizens in the UT that they're pretty disgruntled with the condition of the roads. And I agree, I think he brings up an excellent point. If we wait until July 14th to take any type of action, you know, we're kicking the can further down the road. The roads are not going to get taken care of between now and then. So I think obviously you want, obviously you're talking about having Jerry available for the executive session, and maybe we could do it this week. Obviously, you can't have it without him present, that's for sure.
Yeah, right. That's okay.
You know, I'm more than game to call in and participate in that this week if we can get, contact Jerry and see what his schedule may be. I don't know what your schedules are, but I can make myself available.
Okay.
I can call in, but I won't be here.
Charlie won't be here.
I could call in, I'm happy to participate.
Yeah, you could certainly call in.
Yeah, I'll do that, absolutely.
I hate that call. That's all right. I know you can't make it, Charlie.
Well, if it's in the executive session, we can publicly hold it downstairs in the other office, which would be much more, less echoing.
Yeah, this year.
If the two of you are going to be here and I'm not.
Yeah, yeah. We could, we could meet, you guys could meet, if I come in, we could meet in my office, we can social distance.
Yeah, and then I can call in.
Why I'm asking, I think we're heading into a big letdown for the county. And I think the Commissioners are going to be right in the middle of it.
With the hikers.
And I think we ought to take care of it before it gets any bigger.
Okay. So we're looking at July.
Well, or we could do it this week. Could we do it this week? I mean, I'll be here until Thursday.
Yeah, yeah, let's do it.
I think we should do it, I think we should do it this week.
Yes.
Don't we have to give them a seven-day notice?
No, no, we're just going to have a meeting with Jerry to discuss this whole issue, right?
Right. That's the only thing on the agenda.
Yeah, we don't even have, I mean, I suppose we have notified the press, and if we do, we want to, but there won't be anything else held.
Oh, yeah, we definitely have to give notice to the press, but I could certainly put an agenda together today and get that out, so.
Okay.
He's just wanting to get a hold of Jerry and, I know Vicki, Vicki's it today.
We don't want to do it Friday, and we get talked about that.
How about Thursday, the second? But I have a 10 o'clock meeting. I'm an old person now, I got to go deal with my Medicare.
So could we do it at 11?
11 o'clock.
11 o'clock, Thursday, Julie?
It's going to be a special meeting. We had set an appointment to meet later every time, but.
No, 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 this is one time, yeah, I'm sorry.
This is one time.
July, July 2nd at 11 o'clock.
July 2nd?
And, and, why don't you have, why don't you have Vicki try to get a hold of Jerry right now just to make sure, just make a quick phone call before you adjourn?
Okay, sure.
Can you do that? Vicki, you got the time?
We'll do that to make sure he'll be at 11.
I got his phone number over here.
Yeah, you call him, Clyde. Yeah, you call him, Clyde.
Yeah, the roads, I've had too many people talk to me about it, but, and they only do, they like it, so, but not this year.
How many people attended the meeting last night?
All of them. 25, maybe?
Pretty good.
Yeah. Jared?
I have a lot.
Can you come to Commissioners' Special Commission meeting at 11 o'clock on the 2nd? At 3:30? Can you be here at 11? Okay. Okay, we're going to set a meeting with the Commissioners in just few as a road agent at July 2nd.
11 o'clock.
11 o'clock.
11 o'clock.
Good.
Perfect. Okay, Jared, thanks. Yep, bye-bye.
Okay, Clyde called Jerry, then let's go, Julie.
Okay, that sounds good. I will get an agenda out today to the press.
I thought you was on vacation.
I am, but yeah, mhm, kind of.
That's a nice vacation, come up here at 11 o'clock.
Julie, you can call us, you can call in on 11. I don't see why you have to be here. We can use your office.
Yeah, we'll figure something. We'll figure something out, we'll make it work.
Clyde and I will be here.
I'll be here, too.
All three of us will be here.
We'll all be here.
On the 2nd, yeah.
On the 2nd, I'll be here, yeah.
Okay, good, good, excellent.
She doesn't want to.
You don't need to, Julie.
Maybe you don't have to come in, you're on vacation.
Do we need to make a motion to sign the warrants?
No, you approved the Treasurer's report, see?
Okay, so that's enough, okay. Good. Anything else, gentlemen? Julie?
No, I am all upset, thank you.
Okay.